Today's date is July 14, 2021, and the time is 9:30 a.m. Today's hearing is completely remote. We are using a Zoom video conferencing meeting platform today. So for you at home who are viewing the hearing or may wish to participate in the hearing, I wanted to take a moment to explain the technological pieces of the remote hearing. And we also have a slide app that should be providing some information as well. So to participate in today's hearing, you may connect with us via the Zoom link, which is posted on the Planning Department's homepage at STCOplanning.com. Alternatively, you may participate in today's meeting by phone. Please dial 1-669-900-9833, or 6833, excuse me. And when prompted, enter collaboration code number 83688564623. If you wish to simply view today's meeting, it is being broadcast live on television. And for more information, please visit Community Television's website. A couple of instructions about participating in today's meeting. For each agendized public hearing item, time will be provided for speakers to contribute their testimony. Speakers will be muted until called on to speak. I will ask participants who wish to provide testimony to either remotely raise their hand by selecting the hand icon on the Zoom link, or if calling in by telephone by remotely raising their hand by pressing star nine on your telephone. I will call on participants by either your name or by the last four digits of your telephone number. If you're participating via the Zoom link, when I call on you to speak, you'll see a pop-up on your screen that says unmute. Please accept the pop-up, state your name for the record, and provide your testimony. If calling in via telephone, you must unmute yourself by pressing star six on your telephone. Members of the public will be provided three minutes to speak on agendized items. If at any time you have difficulty connecting to today's meeting via the Zoom link or calling in via telephone, please email our support staff, Michael Lam, at Michael.Lam@Santa Cruz County.us. He will be checking his email periodically throughout the meeting, and he's on standby to assist you if you have any questions. All right, it appears we are situated. I will now turn it over to the Planning Commission Chair, Judith Lazenby. Good morning, Judith.
Good morning, and thank you. And the good morning to all of the participants. And welcome to this July 14, 2021, meeting of the Santa Cruz County Planning Commission. The time is now 9:33, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. Can you all hear me?
Yes, we can, Chair.
Oh, thank you. It's 9:33, and I'm calling this meeting to order. May we please have a roll call, Ms. Reddick?
Yes. All right, we'll call Commissioner Schaefer-Fredes.
Here.
Commissioner Shepherd? Commissioner Shepherd? You may be muted.
I thought she had her alternate.
She's on here. Let's see. Commissioner Shepherd, can you hear us? Oh. And she's off. Sorry. Sorry, I had to relaunch the meeting for some reason, but I'm here now. No problem. Good morning. Commissioner Sheridan?
I'm here.
And Commissioner Holbert? Commissioner Holbert, you may be muted.
Here.
Good morning. And then Chair Judy Lazenby?
Here.
Good morning. All right.
Thank you. Moving on down the agenda, are there any additions, changes, or corrections to today's agenda?
No, there are not, Chair.
Well, having none, then may I have a motion to approve the entire agenda, including the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Why are, I'm a little confused. This is different than how we usually do it. We move on to number three and number four. I don't understand why we're approving the whole agenda, right, or the consent agenda and three and four at the same time?
Well, because we have not had a consent agenda item since we started making the approval of minutes part of the regularly scheduled agenda. So this, because we do have a consent agenda item, then I'm asking for a motion to approve the agenda so it will take care of that item.
So when you say approve agenda, what item numbers do you mean? If you can clarify that, please.
Okay, that would be all the items from from the beginning down through item number eight. This is just approval of the order that these things are listed and will be entertained.
Okay, and then we'll come back to each individual item after we approve.
Well, we won't come back to the consent item because unless I hear a motion that that be pulled off and heard as the regularly scheduled items.
Okay, so we won't open up the consent again. But we will go back to then.
Item number six.
Well, what happens to items number three and four?
No, we will go back to three and four. But this will just, right.
Okay. Okay, I just don't remember doing it in this order before, but.
We have not had any item on the consent agenda for about five years, I think.
That's true.
So maybe it's more than my memory that's not working. Okay.
Well, you know, it doesn't really matter. If it's cleaner and easier for other members, we can approve the consent agenda and then move on like we always have. I don't think it makes much difference.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make that motion.
A second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, then are there any declarations of expartee communications?
Yeah.
Hearing none, then I will move on to the oral communications. And this is the time when the Commission will hear brief statements from members of the public who wish to speak regarding issues that are not on today's agenda. And you will have two minutes, each one of you. Are there any participants online?
Yes, Chair, I'm seeing a hand raised by Michael Lewis and Jean Brockelbank, so we will hear from them. Good morning, Michael and Jean. Will you please state your name for the record in case I've misstated your name? You have two minutes.
Hi, this is Jean Brockelbank speaking now. We are two individuals who are sharing the same computer, so we hope that as we go through the Planning Commission meeting, we will be able to each speak individually. I'm asking that of the Chair now, just to alert you. Secondly, I was confused by the way you began the meeting because generally you follow the agenda, which I had studied, and you go, you do number one first, and then you do number two, and then you do number three, and then you do number four, and then you get to number five, which was the consent agenda. So that was very confusing to me. And also, members of the public are generally asked if they want to speak about any consent agenda item. And so that didn't happen either. And I think that's all that I have to say, except did I hear you say that when it comes to an agenda on the regular agenda, that we will only have two minutes?
Three.
Or we will have three minutes to speak? I just wanted to confirm that for the agenda items that we will have three minutes to speak.
In the public hearing, yes.
Okay. Okay, all right. So thank you very much. It's good to be here at this meeting, and it's good to see the, be able to see the faces of the various commissioners. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Okay, we have another caller today by the last four digits, 2915. Good morning, please state your name for the record. You have two minutes.
Hello, this is Becky Steinbruner. Can you hear me?
Yes, good morning, Becky.
Thank you. Good morning. I am not sure I will be able to stay to listen to item number seven. I have a medical appointment this morning. If I speak now and I'm able to stay, would I be precluded from speaking about it again during the scheduled agenda time?
Well, you wouldn't be precluded, but we, at any time that you speak during this particular part of the program, we don't have any discussion of that.
Yes, thank you. So if I am able to stay, I could testify again on item number seven?
Correct.
Oh, that's great. That's not how it works at the Board of Supervisor meetings, so I'm glad that you allow ample public comment. I am concerned, well, first of all, just let me say that I am watching the, on a different topic, the Local Hazard Mitigation Plan that is now open for public comment, and comments close on July 23. I'm wondering if there will be any kind of a public hearing or meeting about that to go over that very extensive document as it is in form going for approval. I haven't seen anything like that. I have many concerns about the wildfire component of that hazard mitigation plan. And then to speak to item number seven, in case I'm not able to stay, I am very opposed to this project. I think this will cause great harm to the Simkins Swim Center users and the traffic and the quality of what goes on there in terms of focus on the swim center. The construction itself of this Live Oak Annex, which they're calling a library and using Measure S funding for, is not, is not a library. It's, I mean, I read in some of the Board of Supervisors materials, there may not even be a librarian staff on duty there, yet Measure S money is being used to fund it. There would be a total of 990 truckloads of cut and fill that would take to construct this annex right on the property and connected to the Parks Department building and the swim center.
That's two minutes. Thank you, Becky.
Is that it?
That's the two minutes for public comment.
Okay. And finally, if I'm not able to stay, I oppose that there will be.
Ms. Steinbruner, I think you were referring to item number eight on the agenda.
That's correct, Chair. Okay. Let's see, if there are any other members of the public who wish to speak on an item not on today's agenda, please make yourself known by raising your hand. And I am not seeing any additional callers, Chair.
Okay, thank you. And we will go on to the regularly scheduled items since we have approved all the other items, especially the one on the consent. The item number six is the minutes.
I'll move approval of the minutes of May 26.
Is there a second?
I believe I have to abstain from that.
Right.
That's correct.
Commissioner Schaefer-Fredes?
I made the motion.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, I'll second it.
Thank you, Commissioner Schaefer. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
Denise Holbert not voting.
Okay, there'd be two abstentions then, Commissioner Sheridan and Holbert.
Correct, thank you. Okay.
Okay, so then we move on to item number seven. Renewal of the Partners in Restoration.
Okay, let me promote, we need to promote Juliette Robinson making the presentation today. Walter, will you please promote Juliette Robinson? I'm not, it doesn't appear that I'm able to. Thank you. Good morning, Juliette.
Good morning, Jocelyn.
Good morning. Do you have any additional members of your team who we should be promoting to speak today?
Matt Johnston, and I think, I believe Kelly Kamara should be on the line as well.
Okay.
From the Resource Conservation District.
I see them both, thank you. And it looks like they've both been promoted. Thank you very much.
I also have a brief slideshow that I sent over.
Great. Walter, you can go ahead and bring up the slideshow for item number seven. Thank you.
Okay, are we ready?
We are ready.
Great. Thanks, Jocelyn. Good morning, Commissioners, Chair Lazenby. I am here today to present the Resource Conservation District of Santa Cruz County's request for an extension of their existing master permit for environmental enhancement projects. Next slide, please. Master permit is a programmatic-type permit that has been in place now for about 16 years. It covers a number of different county approvals as applicable for certain types of projects that qualify under the program, including a coastal development permit, riparian exception, grading permit, biotic approvals, and encroachment permit. Next slide, please. The master permit was originally approved by the Planning Commission in 2005 and has been granted a number of extensions since that time by both the Planning Department and the Planning Commission. These extensions have occurred approximately every five years, and some minor changes and additions were made to the permit in 2011. Today's request is for a five-year extension to the permit with some minor amendments to the practices covered by the permit. Next slide, please. The master permit is part of the Countywide Partners in Restoration Permit Coordination Program, which is implemented by the Resource Conservation District of Santa Cruz County, or RCD. This program partners local, state, and federal agencies with the purpose of helping private landowners on a voluntary basis who are interested in correcting problems on their properties like erosion and degradation to sensitive habitats but are often discouraged from undertaking such projects because regulatory permitting can be very complex, time-consuming, and cost prohibitive. So this program helps streamline that permitting process. Property owners are faced with a number of issues that can be streamlined by this program, and I've included a few examples here of some of the more common problems. Next slide, please. Unpaved rural access roads that have poorly designed or maintained drainage infrastructure are common throughout the county. And while these roads may look fine in the dry weather, when it rains, not only does it create access issues, but all of this sediment ends up in our streams and waterways. Next slide, please. Another common problem is native habitats being overtaken by invasive species that can outcompete native plants and degrade natural habitats. Next slide. Man-made dams and other structures that create barriers to migration of endangered fish species are also much too common throughout our county streams, often on private properties. And removal of these types of barriers can be some of the more complicated projects to complete because of the presence of endangered species and the many regulatory agencies that become involved when working in a stream like this. Next slide, please. Under the Partners in Restoration Program, the Resource Conservation District coordinates with these other agencies who are partners in the program, and it helps streamline the permitting process. So landowners deal solely with the RCD, who then is responsible for ensuring that all the county, state, and federal requirements are being met. The master permit authorizes 15 different types of projects. All are intended to create, restore, or enhance natural habitat and/or protect water quality. Eligible projects are subject to certain size limitations and other parameters and conditions that are built directly into the permit. And overall, each project must demonstrate a net benefit to the environment. I've included a few examples here on the following slides of some of the types of projects that are commonly, or commonly have been covered under the permit in the last 16 years. Next slide, please. Sometimes something as simple as improvements to the slope and drainage infrastructure on these existing access roads can greatly help reduce or eliminate erosion and sediment that would otherwise end up in our streams. Next slide. Implementation of fish habitat enhancement projects, including the removal or modification of barriers to fish passage, can sometimes open up many, many miles of stream habitat for endangered fish. So while the footprint of these types of projects and the impacts may be small, the net environmental benefit can be huge. Next slide. Obstruction removal includes the removal and disposal of unwanted structures from waterways and sensitive habitats. Next slide. Removal of exotic plants and replanting with native vegetation can restore rare declining sensitive habitats and improve habitat for the species that live within them. Next slide. Insulation of sediment basins can help stabilize downstream channel flows and reduce sedimentary runoff. Next slide. Streambank protection is the practice of using vegetation or structures to stabilize slopes, and this helps prevent further erosion and future sedimentation. Next slide, please. Wetland management was one of the practices added to the program in 2011, and this practice has been utilized to restore or enhance wetland conditions at 10 different sites since that time. Next slide, please. So as I mentioned before, the Partners in Restoration Program has shown continued success throughout the 16 years since its conception, and there have been no significant violations or other problems with the master permit since its original approval in 2005. So since that time, the master permit has facilitated 116 environmental enhancement projects across the county. Approximately 40 miles of salmanted habitat have been improved with the program. Around 40,000 tons of sediment have been captured and prevented from entering our waterways, and approximately 200 acres of upland, wetland, and riparian habitat have been restored. Next slide. This is a map that's just showing the distribution of projects that have been completed under the program countywide since 2005. Next slide, please. So at this point, the program has been successfully underway for, like I said, approximately 16 years. And the RCD, county planning, and other participating agencies have really been able to hone in on what works and what can be fine-tuned to strengthen and improve the program. So some minor changes to the permit are being proposed for this extension, and all of which are intended to either refine permit efficiency or improve resource protection and enhancement. New terms are also being proposed regarding the level of approval required for these permit extensions moving forward. The proposed master permit would allow future extensions to occur every five years at a Level III approval by the Planning Department. And so these extensions would only come before your commission for approval if any major amendments or revisions were proposed that require additional CEQA review and analysis. Next slide, please. For CEQA, a mitigated negative declaration was adopted by the Planning Commission in 2005 for the original master permit. The currently proposed changes to the permit and program itself have been reviewed and involve minor technical changes that do not change the CEQA determination and would not require additional environmental review or revisions to the mitigated negative declaration. So we prepared an addendum to the 2005 MND, which was included in your packet for review. Next slide, please. In conclusion, the original CEQA determination for the master permit is still valid, and with mitigation, there will be no significant impacts associated with the program or the minor amendments being proposed. This extension of the master permit would allow for continuation of a successful program that partners local, state, and federal agencies to help private landowners complete much-needed environmental enhancement projects across the county. So staff recommends that your commission approves this five-year extension of the master permit with minor amendments and approves the addendum to the 2005 mitigated negative declaration. Next slide. And myself, Matt Johnston, the Environmental Coordinator, and I believe Kelly Kamara with the Resource Conservation District are all here to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Are there any questions by the commissioners?
I have a question. I came to the meeting with information as of yesterday, and I'm wondering if you could list the minor exceptions that are being part of this approval?
The changes to the permit?
Yes.
The, there are several changes to the size restrictions. So most of the, most of the changes, there's a minor change made to the wetlands management, which was added in 2011, and so they've really been sort of fine-tuning what works and what doesn't work. So they've increased both the, or asked for increases in both the cubic yards of grading that's allowed and also the area of grading. There's also some increases to the linear feet of stream habitat improvement, so de-watering, linear feet of de-watering has increased some, and that's mostly to match the other regulatory agencies. So NO Fisheries has a 1,000 linear feet area of de-watering that's allowed. We've changed some minor language to the revegetation portions of the permit that, because in the last 15 years, we have a much better understanding of what works for restoration and what doesn't. Some minor language changes to allow for better improvements to monarch habitat in case that species becomes officially listed in the next few years. There's an increase in the width of in-stream dam removals by 10 feet. So a bit of a larger width of dams can be removed for fish passage. And then Kelly, you may, there may be some additional changes. I think most of the, there were some minor administrative corrections and changes to reporting procedures. So rather than having a full end-of-year report, we're going to do more of a table format because it's easier to review and easier to prepare. I think that covers most of the changes.
Thank you. Any other commissioners have questions?
I'd just like to make a comment.
Okay.
I think this is a great program. I've seen some of the results, and it makes it easy and. I've seen some of the results and it makes it easy and possible to do some really important stuff. So it's really nice to get the report. I haven't seen a summary of all that's been going on. So I found the report really interesting and I'm really glad we have this. And a great report, too, by the way. It was clear and understandable and really insightful.
Chair Lassenby?
Yes.
I agree with Commissioner Shepherd. It was a very interesting report. I wasn't aware of the depth of the programs. I just had a brief question about the mechanics of financing this. Most of the clients are private property owners, I would imagine. Is that true?
Yes, they all are.
Okay. And so then is it done on a cost basis?
Kelly can probably speak more to the financing of the actual projects. My understanding is that there are some tax funds that are available and then also grant funding that the RCD looks for. The county is not part of the funding for the projects. Kelly, do you want to speak to how the funding for these projects works?
Sure. Good morning, commissioners. And thank you for the opportunity to present this morning and for your continued support of the program. Our clients come to us on a voluntary basis. The Resource Conservation District works in a non-regulatory, non-enforcement. And our mission is to help private landowners restore natural resources. The funding sources for permit coordination are multiple. Like Juliette mentioned, we do have a small tax base from the county. But predominantly, our funding comes through grant writing. So our funds for implementation, designs, and completing all the documentation for permits is either predominantly through individual grants or through fee-for-service agreements through private landowners when we don't have grant funding available.
Do you ever have a situation where the client, where there's not grant funding available and the client can't afford to pay the cost of the service?
We always have to prioritize resources within the community. If it is a high-priority project and we don't currently have funding for that type of project or one of our programs, we will seek funding for that individual and owner. We do request some kind of in-kind, if not cash, contribution from the landowners. We've just found that there's a lot more buy-in and commitment to long-term maintenance of the project. When they're either involved through ongoing maintenance, maybe they do the revegetation themselves or a small cash contribution, it tends to lead to longer-term buy-in and management.
Right, great. Thank you.
Sure.
And will we hear from Mr. Johnston?
I believe he's available for questions.
I am available for questions, but I think Juliette and Kelly have fully represented and have all the facts that you need.
Okay, does that end your presentation?
That's all I have for now unless you have more questions.
Well, what's our official action on this?
You should be open.
This would be for... Yes, I was just getting ready to do that. I will now open the public hearing. And all of the ones, the participants online. Ms. Drake, are you still with us?
I am, yes. And so this is, the chair has opened the public hearing for this item, which is item number seven on the agenda. And I just wanted to remind anyone who may be calling in with a comment that to make yourself known that you wish to make a comment, you would press star nine on your telephone to remotely raise your hand. And so let me see if I see anyone here. And, Chair, I'm not seeing any callers for this item at this time.
Okay. I show there 34 participants. Is that online, on the phone?
I'm seeing, I am seeing a number of attendees, but I'm not seeing anyone raising their hand to speak on this item.
Okay.
Yes.
If there are no participants that want to address this issue, then I'll bring it back to the commissioners for discussion.
Well, I'd like to move approval of the renewal. What's the language I need here?
Okay. Do I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? And then...
I think what Commissioner Shepherd is referring to is that she's moving the staff recommendations.
Thank you.
On page five of the report to adopt the addendum to the mitigated negative deck and approve the application number 211073 based on the findings and conditions attached to the staff report.
Thank you.
That's indeed what I would like to. The motion contains exactly that language.
Okay, and I seconded it already, so I think we're ready to vote.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 And any opposition? Thank you. So then this has been approved, 211073.
It's a great program. I just want to say it's a great program and I think you should get more publicity.
Thank you, Juliette.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, commissioners.
So that brings us to item number eight. The proposal to construct a library annex at Simkins Swim Center.
Okay. And so Walter, we would need to promote Randall Adams. He's presenting on this item today. And please also promote Damon Adlau. Thank you. And we can go ahead and load the PowerPoint for item number eight. Good morning, Randall. It appears you're muted, Randall.
Sorry about that. Good morning, Randall Adams, the County Planning Department. I'd like to begin by stating that we did receive an item of correspondence early this morning from a member of the public opposed this project. That was an email forwarded to support staff. And then you also had an opportunity to hear during oral comments from Becky Steinbrenner. Hopefully she'll also have an opportunity to speak on this item during a public comment. As noted in the agenda, this is a proposal to construct a library annex at the Simkins Swim Center. And if we could go to the next slide. The project is located to the west of 17th Avenue, behind Shoreline Middle School and adjacent to the upper portion of Schwan Lake, the trails above Schwan Lake in the Live Oak Planning Area. Go to the next slide, please. The zoning for this site is PR, which is Parks, Recreation, and Open Space. Go to the next slide, please. And the general plan, land use designation for this site is O-R, which is consistent with the zoning. It is Parks, Recreation, and Open Space. The site is currently improved at the Simkins Swim Center, which includes the Live Oak Community Center and administrative offices for Parks and Recreation staff. Yes, thank you for showing the slide photographs. We can go through those. We go back to the, that's fine. These are some photos that are showing the site as it currently exists and including the front entry to the Simkins Swim Center, which is the area where the annex is proposed. The traffic circle there with the oak tree, the tree would be retained. Traffic circle is proposed to be removed. Next slide. These are existing shots of the, these are shots of the existing front entry showing how the swim center is currently accessed. The proposed annex would be to the left of this in the photos. Go to the next slide, please. This is a site overview. And this shows that the project would occur in two phases. The first phase being the most substantial. It would be on the front of the property, including the traffic circle, the annex addition, and a new pedestrian plaza. With the second phase occurring later at the rear of the building, which would include a childcare facility and some landscaping improvements. Next slide, please. This here shows on the site plan, the total new footprint of building area. As you can see in red, approximately 2,000 square feet of new area is proposed at the front of the building. And then in the second phase, approximately 550 square foot addition of building for a childcare area facility would be proposed. Next slide, please. This, the lower elevation, the upper elevation is the existing front elevation along the building. It's just to be looking kind of along the whole driveway of the parking lot area across the building. The lower slide is difficult to read because of the line weight, but the primary purpose of this slide is to show that the existing addition would be on the left portion of that image. And it is no higher than the existing building. Next slide, please. These are more detailed elevations of the proposal. The proposed 2,000-square-foot addition would also have adjacent to it a covered area with seating, which would be adjacent to the entrance into the pool facilities. Next slide, please. And this is a better visual rendering of that. This shows how there would be an awning, the library annex on the left side of that proposed addition, and then the open area that is covered, which would be an area adjacent to the pedestrian plaza. So this would allow more outdoor activities and so forth to occur with this facility. Next slide, please. And this shows how the landscape improvements would change. The traffic circle that had, that is currently there is shown in the upper portion of this slide with the oak tree in the middle, which will be retained. And then showing how the pedestrian plaza would be configured around the proposed addition. The total new floor area for the proposed library annex would be approximately 2,000 square feet, as noted in the first phase. The second phase would include approximately 550 square feet at the rear of the building in the second phase. The design of the proposed additions would be consistent with the architectural style of the existing building. And the project would be compatible with the surrounding pattern of development, including the adjacent Boys and Girls Club and the Shoreline Middle School. Landscaping and paving improvements would also be included in each phase with the circular driveway at the front of the facility being replaced with the new pedestrian plaza indicated in this image. And the entry to the combined facilities for the annex, the swim center, and the administrative offices for parks and recreation. Adequate shared parking would remain available for the combined uses, as indicated in the traffic study prepared for the project, which is also included under Exhibit G of the staff report, starting on page 53. As proposed in condition, the project is consistent with the county code, the general plan, and the local coastal program. Staff recommends that your commission accept the determination that this project is exempt from further review under the California Environmental Quality Act and that you approve application 201354. That concludes the staff presentation, and we are available for questions if you have any. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions by the commissioners?
Yeah. I've got questions.
Okay. Commissioner Sheridan?
I have several members of my family that have physical disabilities. And I also have a young grandson. And I can't, sometimes I have, they have to stay in the car. And libraries often need a way to drop off a book or approach the building and check out a book. And I was surprised that all the handicap access, all of the parking was removed from the front of the building. And I'm concerned about that. Because you can't put a child out of the car, go inside. If you just want to drop off a book, it's maybe too far away. So that was question number one. Question number...
Mr. Adams, were you going to respond to the...
I thought there were more questions coming, but definitely, I can respond to that, certainly. The plans indicate that the existing accessible parking will not be modified, which is adjacent to the entry to the swim center now, which is actually if you were looking at the building to the right of that. And that on the plans will remain the same. I would defer to the project architects with Nolan Tam and the project manager as to how decisions were made about the library annex and the ability to drop off books at that location. But there will continue to be a vehicle drop-off for individuals to be dropped off at the front of the pedestrian plaza. So in terms of accessible parking, I don't believe there is any change proposed to the actual designated accessible spaces as shown on the plans.
Thank you. And on the lighting, just, so you're recommending to, that that would be a question for the architects?
For the accessible parking?
No, for environmental impact for birds, for example.
Oh, I didn't hear a question about lighting. I think that the volume may have cut out on that question.
I think that's correct. Would you mind restating that question, Commissioner Sheridan? I think you cut out for a moment while you were asking the second question.
Okay, thanks. So what I'm concerned about is that any additional lighting would not be, would not be having any impact on wildlife. So we're not increasing any lighting and that it's progressive in thinking about the fact that there's a huge bird rookery and bird habitat next door that would be affected by increasing any lighting.
I'm not aware of any increase in lighting beyond what is there other than perhaps just replacement of lighting along the front of the building and under the canopy area. I would defer to the architectural team if they are proposing any brighter lights or lights that are not directed downward, keeping all glare on the site.
Yeah, hello. Yeah, if I may, I'm Damon Adlau, I'm a project manager with Department of Public Works. And I'd like to answer that question. So the new lighting will be consistent with what's there currently. The, yeah, the intent is definitely to have all lighting to be downlit. And it shouldn't be anything more than what's currently there. I believe the Nolan Tam team, the architecture team may be on the line. Leah Martinson, she can be promoted to maybe respond to this question?
Yes. Walter, will you please promote Leah Martinson? I see her hand is raised as well.
Thanks, Joffrey.
Repeat the names, please.
Leah Martinson, she has her hands, her hand raised. She's an attendee. Will you please promote her to panelist? Thank you. Good morning, Leah.
Hello, everyone. Thanks for having us. Yes, I can confirm what Damon said, that all of the lighting is dark sky compatible. So they're all downlighting. And the plaza is really replacing that existing traffic circle, which had pretty tall parking lot lights. And we're replacing it with fewer parking lot lights and low-level bollard lights just to maintain, you know, safe lighting levels through the plaza at nighttime. So it's not increasing the light levels of the project. Changing, but not increasing.
That's good to hear.
Do you want further question, elaboration on that? Or is that answer your question?
That answered my question. Thank you. That's, sounds better than what's there, actually.
It's going to be beautiful. I know I'm not supposed to say that right now.
So the representatives from Noel and Tam are available for further questions, then? Ms. Martinson?
Yeah, I'm the representative for...
Yeah, I'm the representative from Nolan Tam, so yes, we are available. I'm happy to answer anything else.
Any other questions from commissioners?
Um, I, Chairperson Lazenby, if I may. I had a question, so they, this is called a library annex, and its use is going to be, what again? Could somebody describe that, please?
Yeah, yeah, if I may, I could describe the use. So primarily, um, the use of the space is to accommodate library programs for Santa Cruz Public Library System, but specifically the Live Oak Branch, which doesn't have the space. It's a roughly a 12,000 square foot building, but they don't have the, um, small conference rooms, the group study rooms, and the tutoring center, which is, which are just a few of the planned programs, um, for the annex itself. So a lot of it, I guess, for lack of a better term, is maybe a little bit of overflow for the, um, Live Oak Branch to, to have their library programs and a place to do it. In addition, one of the, the things that, uh, this site was identified for those programs, because it also, um, the, the adjacencies with the Simpkins Swim Center, the Boys and Girls Club, Shoreline Middle School, and then developing kind of a sense of place for Live Oak. We thought this was an ideal place for that. Uh, I also want to add that the plaza, while it's not additional, um, building space, it also is being designed to accommodate programs. And a lot of these, the pro, the outdoor programs have yet to be decided, but there's talks of, you know, if it's food trucks or potential type arts and crafts types, type areas. And it's really gonna kind of humanize that space a little bit more, in my opinion. So, um, we just felt like this was an ideal place for that. But to answer your question in short, it's primarily for library programs.
Okay, and then the childcare center, which is a second stage improvement. That would be, um, a publicly run childcare center, or private?
Yes, that would probably... I'm, I'm sorry, um, for interrupting, but to answer your question, the, it would be run by the Parks Department. And some of the programs, there's currently an MOU being worked on by the two, by the library and the Parks Directors to share the spaces. But getting back to the childcare area currently, the discussion is that it would be run by Parks Department.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from commissioners?
I have another question.
Okay, Commissioner Sheridan?
Thank you. Is this going to be a library housing books? Or is this going to be a facility for, um, meeting rooms? I'm, I'm confused about what the whole purpose was.
Yeah, I, the, there will be the opportunity for holds, and I think that's maybe Leah, and I'm not sure if there's anybody on from the library to talk specific programs. There, there will not necessarily be stacks of books per se, but it will be a place and opportunity to have holds, and you could, um, basically through your system, through your account, ask that the, uh, the books that you're reserving are held at this space. But the, the actual spaces themselves, again, are for library programs. Some of the reading programs, literacy programs that they have there, as well as opportunities for, um, for, for kid group study and, and similar things. But as far as it's, we're trying to, it's sort of rethinking, and a lot of the projects that I'm working on for the library, it's rethinking what a library is. A lot of times the term 21st century library, which is the, in general, the model is to remove some of the books from the space. They'll obviously make them accessible via, um, uh, the reserve system, but create spaces for community, spaces for group study. Again, it's, that's kind of the focus in a lot of the builds of these new buildings. So, um, yeah, hopefully I can answer your question. Maybe Leah, you could add anything, and I'm not sure if there's a library staff here who'd like to, to comment on the, the program specifically. If you could raise your hand. And Leah, have you had anything else to add to that, maybe?
Yeah, I mean, I think Damon probably can, and the library can speak to the specifics of the programs, but you are correct that there is no permanent book storage currently planned in the annex space. What, what is being planned for is automated book lockers and hold space so that people could pick up and drop off books in that case, and then it, they would be transferred to the other library branches. But there is no, um, no stacks, for lack of a better word.
Damon, I'm seeing a hand raised by Heather Norquist. Is that someone with the library?
Absolutely, yeah, she's a regional manager, thank you.
Yes, Walter, will you please promote Heather Norquist? Good morning, Heather.
Good morning. Good morning, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I can talk about some of the programs that we would like to offer at the Live Oak Annex. We, one of the problems at the Live Oak Library Branch is parking. It's very limited because of the site. And we have some very popular programs that are very well attended, but they're, when people, so many people come that there's nowhere for them to park. So, um, this annex gives us an opportunity to invite huge numbers. For example, our toddler time sometimes gets up to 70 people attending, and that's a noisy program with a lot of movement and and action. It would be great to offer that at the annex. We also, during the summer, offer performers such as bubble magic or magic shows or puppet shows, and we can get around 100 people attending. And this is a space, because we'll be partnering with Parks and Rec, we'll have, through the MOU agreement, we'll have access to that big community room that can fit all those people, and we'll have all that parking. Also, being close to Shoreline Middle School and the Boys and Girls Club, it's, transportation is something that, that is a challenge for, for children and middle schoolers to get to a library after school, but they can just, it'll be right next door to Shoreline Boys and Girls Club. So we can offer more after-school programs, that it'll be easier for them to attend. We could offer craft programs.
Let's make it a party then.
Offense space, and in the middle... We offer homework help in those quiet study rooms. Right now, we have to take over the teen room for any kind of program where people are talking or making noise. So that, that makes the books in the teen room not accessible to teens. So those are some of the programs that we're hoping to offer.
Yeah.
Chairperson Lazenby, could I speak, please?
Uh, yes, Commissioner Sheridan.
Yeah, um, I'm glad that we got those further explanations. I think many of us are familiar with the, uh, improvements at the Capitola Library and the proposed improvements at the Aptos Library, all due to the, the, the new funding that's available. And in both of those libraries that I'm familiar with, there is a lot of, more group rooms, more community services for facilitation, rather than tr, the traditional checking out a book. Um, and there's also in those two proposed improvements, or finished improvements at Capitola, a lot of indoor/outdoor kind of facilitation of group activities and, and using outdoor spaces better. So that's what I see, this ad. At first, I, I think it's the word annex that I just, it's hard for me. I'm not quite sure what that means, but now I understand it's an expansion of, with types of activities that will be available for Live Oak residents. Is that a correct interpretation? Okay.
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Sheridan, did you have further questions?
Uh, just a comment, and, uh, thank you. That really helped clarify for both of, several of the architect and, um, the library representatives. It's wonderful to think that you could have better access and include programs. I don't know how many people would be able to fit into a room, but when you have a community room like that, and toddlers and loud voices, that sounds wonderful. So, thank you.
Can I make a comment?
Yes.
Um, I'm not sure if this is going to the board or not, but if it does go to the board, may I suggest that you put some of this explanation of what's going to happen there into the, uh, into whatever you give the supervisors, because that's the first question everybody asked. And I think we all think these are good and appropriate uses, but it was sincerely missing from the report. Maybe obvious to you, but it wasn't to us. Those sound like great uses to me, too. I totally agree, and this is a good place to do it.
Yeah, thank you. It will go to the board of supervisors once the, um, we have permits in hand, and we're, uh, so it's approval of the design, approval to bid. So I will make sure that there is, um, a good summary and explanation for the project. Thank you.
If there are no further questions, I will open the public hearing. Ms. Drake, do we have, um, participants on the line?
We do. Walter, if you have a, uh, timer, you can set that for three minutes. And we will start with, um, Jean Brocklebank. Good morning, please restate your name for the record. You have three minutes.
Hi, this is Michael Lewis. Well, I am using this, the same computer that Jean is. I'll be speaking first, and then Jean will follow with her comment afterwards.
Okay, good morning.
Okay. My concern for this permit process has to do with the Phase Two section of this, which was not mentioned in Randall's presentation, and which appears only superficially in the planning documents that you have before you. Phase Two is the so-called childcare facility to be built on the southern border of the existing building. However, it is much more than just a box that will have childcare in it. It also includes the patio area that exists on the south side of the building today, which has a large wall around it that separates it from the riparian buffer zone. Unfortunately, the plans for Phase Two, as shown in the plans today, call for the removal of that separation from the buffer zone. And this makes this the most environmentally impactful part, part of this project, because it opens up that, um, riparian buffer zone to all the activity that will go on in this patio area, including, uh, as Commissioner, Commissioner Sheridan suggested, an increased lighting into that riparian zone. The patio area will be extended farther, closer to the riparian zone as it is now. Uh, the wall will be removed, and there will be an extension of modification of the landscaping that currently exists on that, that will affect both the, uh, the noise and light coming from that patio area. If you'll notice on, um, page 10 of the permit application, under section Operational Conditions, it says that the, the review of this Phase Two may be processed initially as a building permit. This is more administrally as a birth building permit. This is more than adding a building to the project. It includes increased intrusion into the riparian buffer zone and the removal of that wall, which will increase the intensity of activity that affects the buffer zone. So I'm, I'm really concerned that this part of Phase Two be addressed now and not be a ministerial decision. That means a decision that will be taken without public input when the, the plans for this Phase Two are completed. I also should let you know, with regard to the previous discussion, that there will be no library staff in this facility except when there are activities going on. The facility will be staffed by Parks, by a park person, by a park employee.
30 seconds.
And not by staff. So this makes it more, not, not a library facility, it's just a, an extension of the meeting area of the, uh, the existing Parks facilities. And it, uh, it's very different than what has been described. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. Um, Jean, would Jean like to go ahead and start making a comment? At this time?
Okay, hi, Jean Brocklebank. I'm a 33-year Live Oak resident. My main concern, beside the fact that there will be no books, no bookshelves, and no librarians at the Live Oak Library Annex, unless there's programming. My main concern is also the Phase Two expanded patio area. Wildlife biologists already know that night lighting disturbs circadian rhythms of all species. This disturbance is a stress factor affecting the well-being of species, including our own. Also, if we learned anything during the COVID pandemic shutdown, it is that wildlife benefited from the reduction of noise in the environment. Indeed, we all remarked upon the relief from traffic noise ourselves. Scientists globally, nationally, and even here at UC Santa Cruz are now providing data that shows that great beneficial response of the lack of noise and just basically the cacophony of modern, uh, urban civilization on... So, um, my thought is, we can have an expanded patio area at Simpkins as proposed, and still protect riparian wildlife habitat. All we have to do is make the design of this project reflect that care. The County General Plan acknowledges the intrinsic value of wildlife habitat. The Coastal Commission will no doubt look at this also. The existing aesthetically pleasing patio curved wall that now separates the riparian buffer zone from human noise, disturbance, and building lighting currently acts as a buffer, this wall, currently acts as a buffer between wildlife habitat of the riparian buffer zone, which is itself a buffer to an extension of riparian habitat. Nighttime patio lighting should be minimized so as not to intrude into the riparian buffer or beyond, and that wall is a good way to minimize that, that light disturbance. Therefore, I ask your commission to amend the conditions of approval of this project application, which we see in the staff report.
30 seconds.
Uh, amend the conditions of approval of this project application, rather than approve the application as provided, by requiring that the Phase Two expanded outdoor patio area be redesigned to retain the existing wall that separates it from the riparian buffer zone, rather than demolish it as planned, and also will be required to incorporate the same kind of wall in the expanded patio area. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Okay, um, let's see, Chair, I'm gonna go back to our callers. I do have a comment, um, which I will read that was emailed to me just now from Becky Steinbruner, but I wanted to check and see if we had any additional callers on the line first. So I wanted to remind folks who may be calling in via telephone to press star nine on your phone to make yourself known if you wish to make a comment on this item, the library annex project. And I'm not seeing any, so Chair, um, if you're amenable, I have an emailed comment from Becky Steinbruner. She has requested that I read it into the record.
Certainly, Ms. Drake, go ahead.
Okay, um, so Becky Steinbruner says, I am opposed, oops, pardon me. Becky Steinbruner says, I'm opposed to the design because it is not harmonious with the Simpkins Center design. There is a large and modern library located only one mile away on Cortola Drive, the Live Oak Library, and there has been no finding providing the need for this library annex, and that this project would be better fit with the existing Boys and Girls Club adjacent. Why can't the library system just use the existing large community room in the Simpkins Center for programs that bring large crowds? Heather Norquist just said there's insufficient parking at the Live Oak Library. How can there be no impact on the Simpkins Swim Center use parking as stated in the project staff report? This makes no sense. The construction would cause great potential harm to Simpkins Swim Center traffic in an area with many young children. Due to the 990... area with many young children due to the 990 truck trips required to cut for cut and fill activity and significant dust, noise, and vibration impacts. Tree replacement will not equal the number of trees replaced. The construction would remove 11 trees, but only eight would be replaced. This is not in keeping with the intent and purpose of Santa Cruz County Code 1634010A, stating that the Board of Supervisors recognizes trees are a valuable resource and necessary for public health, safety, and general welfare. The county has already removed over 100 trees in the county for the installation of the parking lot solar panels, and many were, and many were removed from the Simpkins Swim Center but never replaced. This project results in a further diminished tree population and cooling effect in the overall area. This project would remove the circular driveway area that I have many times seen elderly patients of the Swim Center use for drop off by paratransit and private vehicles, not only for swimming but also for attendance of community meetings in the Simpkins Swim Center Parks and Rec Building. This project would require those people to be dropped off at some distance because the circular driveway would be eliminated. The main entrance to the Simpkins Center, which is near the existing handicap parking areas, is usually closed during evening public meetings in the community rooms. Finally, this overflow area for the existing Live Oak Library should be addressed to the existing, should be added to the existing Live Oak Library, not to the Simpkins Swim Center. It has been stated in staff reports to the Board of Supervisors that there may not even be library staff at this annex, and there may not be books available unless requests are made. This is not a library and should not be funded by measure five monies. This belongs at the existing Live Oak Library or at the adjacent Boys and Girls Club. I regret that I cannot stay to comment this morning, and that I was only given two minutes during public comment rather than three minutes for comment on this item and was cut off mid-sentence. And that concludes Becky's comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I will go back to the list of attendees one more time.
Okay.
And I am not seeing any additional hands raised, Chair.
Okay, if there are no more participants that want to address this issue, then I'll bring it back to the commission and will close the public hearing and bring this back to the commission.
Well, I have comments.
Okay. Commissioner Sheridan?
Well, I agree with Jean and Michael. Unfortunately, being a late, late coming to the meeting, I could not review in detail what I would have liked to. I apologize. I think my initial question, I didn't realize the back childcare area was going to have that kind of impact, and that is a huge concern for me. So I'd like to understand more about that project. I don't know if that could be separated. It's probably part of the same funding, but if it was able to be a separate discussion and mitigation regarding the wall and its relationship to the riparian, I think is a critical factor. Setback, setback, I'm not sure about the setback, but the wall would have a huge impact of affecting light and any other kind of impact on the riparian. So that would be an important question. As far as the trees, I think Becky is bringing up an important point about replacement. There probably is room for adding on the one-to-one on the tree replacement. And I am also a little bit confused about the use of the annex for, what is the percentage of time that it would be open, hours in a day? Is there actually funding for staff? Is this something that's going to be shared by parks? That seemed really confusing. So I like, just to close, I do think that the, the proposal made by, earlier by Jean Brocklebank about the possibility of maintaining that wall made sense to me. So if you'd like to comment on any of that, that would be helpful for the.
Okay, just one moment, Commissioner Sheridan. Commissioner Holbert, do you have?
Yes, I had a suggestion because I agree that, I think we need to look at the area where the childcare is, childcare center is proposed, and I think we could just change the operational conditions on number one, just to say the review of the design and construction of the childcare area proposed in the second phase of the project shall return to the Planning Commission for approval and redesign to protect the riparian area. I don't agree that it should just be a ministerial approval. I think it does need some more work.
Okay, so you would, you would favor then?
I'm okay with the rest of it, but I think we need to stop and look at that again.
Okay, separating Phase Two?
Yes.
Okay, to come back to this commission?
Yes.
I would support that language, and I think it makes sense to break it up that way.
Okay. Are there any other questions? And then I'll ask the representatives to comment on, on your, your comments also, Commissioner Shepherd, I mean Sheridan.
Chair?
Yes.
Mention made in a previous public, I believe it was Ms. Steinbrenner, that the circular driveway is being eliminated? And I just want to clarify, it doesn't look like that on the plans to me. Is that correct?
I thought I read it.
What is happening to the circular driveway, the existing?
The circular driveway is proposed for removal and replacement with the patio area.
So there's going to be no circular driveway to drop people on or off?
That's correct. It appears they're proposing a vehicle drop off in a pocket that is adjacent to the oak tree that was in the center of the circle. You can see this on Sheet A 2.01 probably most clearly in terms of the overview of the site.
Yeah, I'd like to confirm, yeah, there will still be a drop off area, as mentioned by Randall, and then we're retaining all of the PDA parking to the west of the main entry.
Okay.
How far away is that? The current ADA parking, as I recall, was just before the circular driveway on the west side, but I can't remember the, I hope I didn't speak out of turn.
No, go ahead.
No changes proposed to the, the location or number of accessible parking spaces for the plan.
Okay. And does any representative want to address the idea of separating Phase Two to be another application later?
If I may, so currently, the work for Phase One is funded. I do want to note, though, that the area for Phase Two, there was no intent to impose or go into the current riparian zone. We wouldn't be able to do that, and there's nothing designed to remove the existing wall currently. I do want to state that. But going, going back, I mean, the main focus for us right now, I mean, this is a larger project with both phases, but only Phase One has been designed in detail. I don't know if Leo, you want to add anything?
Yeah, I would just reemphasize that, you know, what's shown on Phase Two is essentially diagrammatic. It, the childcare function hasn't really been defined. We don't really understand, we haven't figured out, or no one's figured out what sort of access, what sort of security would be required, whether or not the wall remains, is transformed, is adjusted. I think all of those questions are, I mean, I agree that they should be addressed. There shouldn't be easy access into the riparian zone. The intention is not to extend the boundaries of the site beyond their current boundary, but we, we suppose that there will likely be some reconfiguration needed once that space is designed and the requirements are defined, but we haven't done any of that work yet. So it's, it's diagrammatic only at this stage.
So one of the things we could do, the, the main purpose of the master site plan or even amendment to a master site plan is this project is, is to get a conceptual approval. We certainly could have this item come back to your commission for further review. Alternatively, what we could do, it seems like folks are in agreement that the wall that is there now is effective, and extending the wall along any expansion of the patio area would also be equally effective. It would stay out of the riparian buffer zone, so you'd have the wall for noise and light, and then you'd have the riparian buffer area, both as protections. We could instead change the review of the design and construction of the childcare area to a Level Four review, which means it is still a review that the public can comment on and potentially appeal to a higher body if they'd like. And we could also add a condition that requires them under Roman numeral 4A1A that, for that facility or that, that phase, that we retain the existing patio wall and extend the wall along the expanded patio area. I don't know if the exact shape of the wall with the two wings on it is what would work with the childcare area, but we could, we could fine tune that language to say to maintain a patio wall that, that establishes an effective barrier between the riparian area and the patio.
I would recommend keeping it flexible just because there are so many unknowns at the point, and if the goal is to, you know, not infringe further and maintain a wall of equal or greater separation as a boundary, I would recommend allowing that. Making sure that there's enough flexibility to see what's needed when parks.
Perhaps the correct term would be to retain or replace the existing patio wall and extend the wall along any expanded patio area.
Yeah. May I comment?
Yes, go ahead.
I would, I think the suggestion of it not being ministerial and having it coming back to the Planning Commission is important, and I would not recommend making a suggestion of expanding the wall because that becomes an entire brand-new environmental impact. So I think the whole thing needs to come back for review, but if it's not ministerial, then you can have the opportunity to have public input, however it's decided. I don't think that needs to be figured out right now. It just needs to be able to be commented on, and the Planning Commission needs to have an opportunity for that again.
Okay, and Commissioner Holbert?
I agree with that. I just want to make sure that we, somebody gets to see it again, and it's not just good intentions. I think good intentions often go astray, so we need to be, we need to keep track of it.
Okay. Are we to the stage where someone can make a motion on this?
Well, we, we didn't get a comment on the tree replacement, why that was not a one-to-one.
Would one of you like to comment on why there are more trees removed than replaced?
I would defer to the design team on that decision.
I do not have an answer at this exact moment, so I would have to go back and look at it. I know that we involved an arborist at the early phases of figuring out which trees would be removed, and some of the trees on site did have some health issues, and I would have to find out in more detail exactly how those decisions would be made. I don't want to speak without having information at hand. Sorry, Damon.
Perhaps that could be part of the, the proposal is that there's plenty of room there, even in the park next door, to probably have native, a native tree fill in somewhere on a one-to-one. I think that should be, I think that's part of the county requirement, isn't it? I don't know.
So the trees on the site are not considered significant trees in the coastal zone, which would require a replacement ratio to be determined by environmental planning staff. One-to-one would be a common method. So the protections for those trees would be under our design review ordinance, and generally those are just trees that are six inches in diameter or greater. In this case, since a lot of that area is being converted to hardscape for plaza-type uses, my, my guess is that the idea with the design would be to not have so many canopy trees. It'd be better to shade the parking lot. Another commenter said that some trees were lost in other improvements on the site, so I don't know if there are other locations on the site where trees could go that wouldn't interfere with the solar panels or the plaza plan.
Right, the, if I can comment again, that parking lot definitely lacks shade. I, I don't know if there's trees that could be added in that area, but it'd be great because there's a lot of concrete there, and I think that's a worthwhile thing to follow up on whenever there's concrete or space to plant a tree, and especially in this case, one-to-one.
So I'm going to clarify what, thank you for those, that input. I, I think that one point I do want to say is 11 trees are proposed for removal and eight trees are proposed to be planted, so we're actually talking about three trees here.
Okay.
And some of them are small, quite small already, the ones that are being removed.
Okay, well, I think whenever we can plant trees, it's important.
Would there be any possibility of planting trees in the parking lot? You know, in, in squares that are blocked off for trees?
If, if I, if I may comment, that may be a little bit difficult due to the solar panels that have been, been installed in the parking lot. There is an opportunity potentially, though, and hopefully, I'm not speaking out of term, but I believe we, we've talked about to the, I want to say the north side, closer to the proposed rail trail, there may be an opportunity there for additional trees to be planted. And we've talked about that with the landscape architect earlier. Does that sound correct?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's some landscape space sort of where the existing monument sign is as you come into the parking lot, and I think, you know, something that's come up is putting more actual landscaping in that area. And again, it's not within the scope of this, this particular project right now, but it's certainly an area that is available and not been identified as, would be nice to put more planting in there for sure.
I'd like to comment?
Yes, Commissioner Shepherd.
Well, I'd like to have Commissioner Holbert make her suggested motion, if that's what's going to be again, about separating these projects. I certainly think we don't want to redo anything on tap as we're discussing anything. I think it should come back and be available for public comment, and I think the staff agrees that these concerns that were expressed are valid and can be accommodated, so let's just separate them. I see no reason not to suggest that as part of this project, trees that, that they, we give direction, the trees in the parking lot be looked into. After all, when commercial supermarkets and shopping centers redo their sites, they always put in trees in parking, so it's obviously not complicated or too expensive to do it or else all those commercial entities wouldn't be doing it, and they seem to be required to in every case. So I think let's give a little more force to that direction.
If I may add or comment, just so it's known, a lot of times when you add trees to parking lots, it's when they're new parking lots, and to modify an existing parking lot for trees is, is more difficult. I just wanted to add that. And if I may, I have another comment as well, and hopefully this is the right time. The, the idea of separating the conditions for the, the wall adjacent to the riparian zone, I just, I just want to reiterate that it's, there's no design has occurred yet for that, and that any conditions, additional conditions put on that, that Phase Two work should be very flexible. I just, I just want to note that while it is a riparian zone, it needs to be preserved, there is land adjacent to the riparian zone that is part of parks land, and that currently that area is actually being utilized as an encampment, a homeless encampment. So it's, I think maximum flexibility there in the additional conditions, that is what we're requesting. Thank you.
Thank you, Damon. Uh, Chair Lazenby?
Yes.
If I may, um, I'm seeing that the, um, Park's director, Jeff Gaffney, is raising his hand as an attendee, and I think, um, the commission may wish to hear from him. So shall I go ahead and ask that he be promoted to speak?
Uh, yes, go ahead, even though we've closed the public hearing, but this would be important.
He's part of the project team, I would say.
Right.
Okay. Jeff, good morning.
Good morning, thank you. Um, so I was, uh, unfortunately, I was in another meeting and wasn't able to hear all of the comments, but I did just want to make sure if we're going to have a library project start to make determinations about what's done on the parkland, that we were involved in that decision-making. So it sounded like, um, a library project that we've worked collaboratively with was now making some determinations about what's happening on a parkland. So that was my concern. So happy to, to entertain any questions or thoughts. I think that there's been, um, a plenty of discussion on this already, and, um, I wanted to say that, uh, we are more than happy to try to, um, satisfy any concerns that are brought forward. And I know it sounded like some of this was about a wall, uh, behind the community room and, um, some trees that we were concerned about. We definitely have the ability on some of our parkland back here that had a recent fire on it, as well as the homeless encampment, that we can definitely do some, and should do some tree planting back there. Um, and additionally, we would never do anything to impact the riparian area. If anything, I think it would be important to embrace that riparian area in a very positive way. So, um, I didn't know that the project was going to be split apart, so I just wanted to jump in and see if that was something that needed further discussion.
Thank you. Commissioner Holbert?
I don't want to overcomplicate this in terms of trying to protect the, uh, riparian, um, area. So it, I don't even know if we need to, if, if it's considered splitting it apart, but I don't think that that part of, um, that any construction or anything should go ahead on, um, that building unless it returns to the planning commission or zoning administrator or whoever, so that the public has, uh, ability to at least know what's going on and comment on it and make sure that it's happening. So whatever the simplest way to do that is, the way that I would like to do it. And I don't know whether it just means changing the operational conditions. I am concerned that, um, when we talk about it, it's sort of like, well, we don't know what's going to happen. We don't know what we're going to do. It's all just theoretical at this stage. That's what concerns me. So I just want to make sure that, um, we do protect that area. And I would look to staff to come up with some language there.
I guess I would just, I wanted to share the fact that the homeless encampment was able to be developed back there was partly because the wall is there. And so if we're able to embrace the riparian area and protect it more visibly, I think that was part of the concern for us. And so you're right. It is not necessarily clearly outlined what we would do, but, um, definitely we want to improve the riparian corridor and protect it and do a better job of that. So that's part of what we're trying to accomplish here. So I, I, I just wanted, I don't want to overly discuss, I don't want to discuss this too much, but, um, I feel like the, the intentions that we spent the last couple of years working on here are being sort of misconstrued, and also that we, we're now sharing, uh, splitting the project apart concerns me. I, I, I'm going to defer to Damon, and he, he's going to tell me whether or not this makes sense or not.
Well, I, I don't, you know, I don't, I don't see that, that this is, I think we're, it's kind of you're overblowing, you know, what's, what I'm asking for here.
Okay.
It's just because there are no plans and that's been, people have testified, we don't really know what we're going to do. We don't really know what the design is. We really don't know about the wall. We think we're going to keep the wall. Let's have some certainty before we move ahead with this project. That's all I'm asking. It's not, it's not trying to interfere in Park's business or anything like that. Just, let's do it right.
Shepherd, greatest, Commissioner?
I would support a motion made by either Commissioner Holbert or Commissioner Sheridan, since it's in your district, I believe. Supporting, um, having it come back to the planning commission rather than a ministerial, changing operational condition A1 so that it comes back. That's what I understood, Commissioner Holbert, that you're suggesting?
Yes.
So I just wanted to say I would support if a motion was made in that direction.
Would that be a motion for the entire matter to come back?
No, just for condition on page ten, condition A1. Instead of coming back ministerially, that it come back to the planning commission, which I assume would be a public hearing.
Yes.
It would be just for that section of the project.
Yeah, I'd be happy to make that motion. I believe that our planner had discussed what actual level it would be coming back as. So I don't, if it's not ministerial and you want to have a public hearing, what would that be?
Level six.
Staff would need to explain that possibly.
If, if I may, um, the, the, it sounds like the idea of it being under these, uh, master site plan approvals, oftentimes if there is acceptance that things could move forward and there weren't the concerns that have been raised, we would review those as either a ministerial building permit, sounds like that is not acceptable, or a Level Four, which would be, um, an administrative review with public notice. It does not sound like that is what the commission is asking for. So staff recommends, uh, with the request made by Holbert and others, that the operational condition, Roman numeral four A1, beginning on page ten, be modified to delete the portion that says may be processed ministerially as a building permit and replace that language with shall return to the planning commission for review of the design.
Great.
Yeah, that, we put that, I'm not well-practiced at this, but that sounds appropriate if somebody wanted to try to reword that.
Well, um, why can't we just adopt his language? It's good. You want to read it out again, and we'll make it into a motion?
Certainly. I'll just read the whole condition, Roman numeral A1. Uh, it would read, "The review of the design and construction of the childcare area proposed in the second phase of the project shall return to the planning commission for review of the design." And then it goes on to say about the architectural style and character, but that doesn't seem to be of a concern.
Yeah, and it, and it, and it uses the language would not be ministerial.
Deletes that. That's struck.
Right.
And replaced by shall return to the planning commission for review of the design, or the project design.
Yeah, that part works for me.
I would second that as a motion.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
I'd like to just, um, would it be okay with the maker of the motion? Does the motion be to determine that the proposal is exempt from further environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act and approve application 201354 based on the attached findings with the revision of operation condition A1 as, as described by staff?
Okay.
Would that be acceptable?
Would, we want to make, Commissioner Sheridan?
Yeah.
Can we read that one more time, please?
Okay, um, that we determine that the proposal is exempt from further environmental review under the California Environmental Quality Act. This is under staff recommendations, page three. And approval of application number 201354 based on the attached findings and conditions, except that operating condition A dash, A point one will be revised so that it, it's not a ministerial, but it will be brought back to the planning commission.
I'm confused why the language would say would not have an environmental review because all projects have to be environmentally reviewed, don't they, through county, uh, general plan? They have to meet general plan and they need, I don't know, is that normal to put that in there, that they wouldn't have an environmental review?
Correct. The commission is tasked with accepting the determination that this proposal is exempt from further review under the Environmental Quality Act. That doesn't mean it was not reviewed, looked at, or considered under those provisions. It's just determined to be exempt from further review.
Ah, correct.
And the, um,
So if you were to expand, if you were to expand the wall, how did, that could be an environmental impact. How, how does, how is that managed?
So the way this is lining up now with a return to the planning commission, it's essentially getting rid of the phasing for the project. It's maybe approving it in concept for that second phase, but basically, the Phase Two project will be a whole nother Level Six application, planning commission review, public hearing, and we'll look at that for environmental impacts. My assumption is that the placement of the wall, if it's done in a similar manner to how it's been done previously, would not trigger further environmental review and likely be exempt as well. But we would not make that determination until plans were before us, which is, it sounds like what your commission would like to see.
That's correct.
If any other commissioners want to weigh in on that to help, I'm a little bit not up to speed on how it's done. So if any other commissioners want to weigh in.
I think, I think, I think it's, um, the way to go.
Okay, thank you.
I'm good. Can we call the question?
Mm-hmm. So do we have a, do we have a second chair? I have the motion made by Commissioner Sheridan.
Second.
Thank you.
Call the question.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Or raise your hand?
You can't see me, so I'm raising my hand.
Okay. Thank you. So the motion carries and the, um, so this would be exempt from further, we're, we're keeping that language, right? Further sequel review?
Yep, we called the question on the motion as proposed.
Right. Okay. So that takes care of item number eight on the agenda.
Thank you, by the way, for letting me jump in. I appreciate it.
Oh, thank you. And thank everyone who participated in this. We always need, um, the public's input as well before we make decisions on these. So on item number nine, do we have a planning director's report?
Chairman, can we take a break? It's 11:13.
Well, we only have three items.
Okay.
Yeah, just the three.
Keep following along, yeah.
Planning directors' report?
Um, Chair, I see that Pia Levine, uh, has her hand raised. So, um, Walter, can you please, uh, promote Pia? Good morning, Pia.
Good morning. Is she muted?
I, it appears she dropped out here. Pia, can you hear us? Oh, she's muted. You're muted.
Thank you. Good morning. I just wanted to respond to the, uh, to the item. There's no specific planning directors' report today. I just wanted the commissioners to know that, um, I've been present, sitting in for Kathy during the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. And a report on upcoming meeting dates and agendas.
Um, yes, Chair, we, um, the next scheduled, uh, meeting date is July 28th. And we do not have any items, uh, scheduled for that hearing. So it appears we'll be canceling that, uh, that hearing date. So the next scheduled, uh, hearing would be August 11th. And so far, we do not have reservations for that, um, hearing date, but I will keep you posted as to whether or not we will, um, hold a meeting on that date. So July 28th will be canceled. Um, and I just wanted to let the planning commission know that we are working on bringing, uh, live, um, in-person planning commission hearings back to the board chambers. Um, we hope to, um, retain the call-in, the phone-in component for the public. Um, so Michael Lamb and I will be working with our, um, IT department to, um, put together a hybrid-type meeting, uh, model. And we're shooting for September of this year for bringing the planning commission back to the chambers. But I will definitely be sending some emails to the planning commissioners to, um, keep, uh, the commission abreast of our plans and field any concerns and make adjustments as necessary. I just wanted to let you know, it looks like the board is coming back to the chambers and in-person meetings in, um, August, as I understand it. And that is, that is all from the planning department.
Okay, thank you. And county councils' report?
Good morning, Chair and Commissioners. I wanted to comment on a couple of things that I witnessed this morning. And, um, just to clarify a couple of things, I think the Chair had asked me right before the meeting about the consent item, and I think there was some confusion over how that proceeded this morning. So I think in the future, what we'll do is just, once we come up to the consent item on the agenda, we will have a, a roll call vote on that item. I, I sent the Chair a follow-up email on this. I don't think it was received in time. But just to avoid any confusion in the future, we'll do a, um, a vote on the consent item. And, you know, had there been any public comment on that consent item, we may have had to rescind the motion and actually, um, revote. Uh, but there were no public comments on that consent item, so all went well. And then the other comment that I had was, um, since we're doing this virtually, and I don't know how much longer we're going to be doing these meetings virtually, uh, it always helps to have a roll call vote rather than a, a voice or hand-raised vote. Just for a, um, just for the record, it's, it's a lot easier to distinguish who's voting on what and who's making the motion. So that is all I have, and I wish you a very good week. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair. So that includes our meeting. And, um, I want to, uh, express appreciation for all the IT people who've helped out in this. And just as we're almost getting used to this, I guess we're going to go back to in-person. But I will call the meeting, I will call the meeting adjourned. Thank you all.
Thank you all.
Bye.
Thank you.